All right, I'm gonna get started. I think maybe a couple more are gonna walk in, but let's get started. So anyways, my name is Rick Tubbs and I'm running to be your congressman. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We spent some time over the weekend making some phone calls and dropping off flyers and fighting folks out. And the whole idea is to get my name, of course, and my intentions to run to be your congressman out there, but also a message of why I'm running and why I'm hoping to earn your vote. And tonight, I'm going to give you some very clear ideas of what I will do as your congressman, what I believe in, what I think are some good solutions for our country. And tonight, you'll be able to walk out with a clear choice in your head whether I'm someone who would want to represent you or not. And before you leave tonight, we're gonna have plenty of time for questions. This is a nice, this is a smaller crowd which gives us more time for questions, which is great. Atlanta is one of the smaller counties in the district, and we'll show you up there how it works. However, it's a very good county for a lot of reasons in terms of its rural environment, a lot of good conservative voters up here, which is what I'm looking for. Very, very good. So please, I'm gonna give a little bit of a talk, think of questions you might have as we go through a few slides and a few of the things I'm talking about, and then ask me towards the end, or I should say towards the end, ask me when I'm done, we'll have plenty of time for questions and I'll answer what we can do. So without further ado, let me get started on what we're doing here. And go ahead. I am a lieutenant colonel in the United States Air Force Reserve, a commander of my unit, which is an honor and a privilege, but what it means is I've got a lot of experience as a leader. And I think one of the primary purposes of a leader, if not the purpose, is to first give you a vision of where I think we should go, and then a purpose of why I think we should go there. So let me start out with my vision, and it's very simple. To win in 2012. That is the vision. But also to build a grassroots organization through spreading our message, getting to know folks, and bringing them on board. A grassroots organization that goes out there and talks to the voters and gets this message out there. So people are voting knowing what they're voting for, not just for the D or for the R or for the name, for whatever. I run a campaign on solutions and issues and ideas, and so I need folks' help to get out there and talk to others, because I can't talk to 250,000 people all by myself, one-on-one. So that's the vision of what we're doing. Now, the purpose. Purpose is always a sacrifice. There's some sort of sacrifice in where we're going and the effort it takes to get there. And the purpose I put up there is the issues that I'm running on, and they are very straightforward. And the top three, and I'm gonna spend just a couple minutes on these. The very first reason I'm asking for your vote, the very first thing I want you to think of as you go into that voting booth and vote for Rick Tubbs is I'm going to balance the federal budget. We are borrowing over a trillion dollars every year, I'm sure you're aware of these numbers, against our futures, their futures, my kids, my two girls out there, any of you have children, grandchildren. We're borrowing against their future for our standard of living today, because we are not responsible enough, we're not smart enough, whatever the reason is, is our federal government just doesn't get it done. So I wanna be a part of solving that problem, balancing the budget. Put it in context, we borrow, as a government, over $2 million every minute of every day. A $2 million is a lot of money to me. I could probably live the rest of my life on $2 million very comfortably. We're not spending $2 million a minute, we're borrowing that much, every minute of every day, nonstop, all year round. And right now, there is no plan to fix it. There is no plan out there. Paul Ryan's budget was passed by the House a couple of days ago, and it is attempting to do it, but the current plan, well, the Senate has yet to pass a budget for years now. The current plan is to continue these deficits far into the future with no fix in sight. And that's what I am running, is to be a part of fixing that, because I think I can. I have balanced many budgets in my life, whether it's our family budget, my wife and I work on very diligently and do it together, whether it's our small business budget that we had a while back when we were business owners, so we understand that side of it. And another reason why I think I could be a congressman today for you is I have worked on several military budgets, federal-level budgets. Right now, as a commander, I have nearly $20 million under my control that I have to balance every year. And we do, and it's simple. You prioritize your spending. There's always more liabilities than money to spend, always. So what's most important? What are you gonna spend that money on? Prioritize that list. Then you take every dollar you get and you stretch it as far as you can to make good use of it. Oh, by the way, those dollars are your dollars, right? Those tax dollars, it's your money. When you go to work and they suck out your income taxes, that's money you worked for, you earned, and it goes to the government. And I'll never forget that, that it's your money that I'm spending and I better do it wisely. Even better than if it was my own. So we have to stretch every one of those dollars as far as they go, and then you draw a line, right? And you say no to some stuff. Say, this stuff that we can't afford, we're not gonna spend money on. And that's the way we need to go forward. So balancing the budget, how do we do it? One thing tonight you're gonna hear from me is actual solutions, actual ideas, things you can hang your hat on and walk away and say, that's what Rick Tubbs is gonna go fight for. It's one thing to say, balance the budget, it's one thing to say, we borrowed too much money, it's another thing to actually stick your neck out there and say, this is how I will go about doing it. And I'm about doing that. As a leader, that's what you do. You show the way, you take the risk of controversy, take the risk of somebody disagreeing with you, take the risk of putting down on paper or out there in the public, this is what I wanna do to get to where we're going. And then you defend it. You articulate the idea, you show the pros and cons. So how am I gonna do it? First of all, we gotta grow jobs, not taxes. We pay enough taxes in this country. Grow jobs, make more taxpayers than there are taxtakers, okay? 9% unemployment, stick in there. How do we grow the jobs? That's my vision for growing revenue, growing jobs. How do we do it? We get the government off the backs of the job creators. There is way too much of a federal government burden on those trying to create jobs, small businesses in particular, but large ones too, the ones that will produce those jobs. And we do that through three different things. I call it the three-legged monster that's killing jobs, chasing them overseas, or just flat-out making them disappear. And one is taxation. We are now the highest tax rate on corporations at 35%, because Japan used to be number one, finally figured it out, lowered their tax rates. We're number one in the world. Taxation's too high. Income tax rates, I wanna leave alone. Leave them where they're at, they're cut a couple times under Bush. Democrats are trying to raise those taxes on supposedly the rich, but those rich are small business owners that are out there trying to make a living paying income tax, and the ones that are making more than $200,000 are the ones in the best position to grow their business and grow some jobs. So I don't wanna put a further burden on them. So taxes, one. Regulations, this is the biggest leg on that monster. When Ronald Reagan started in 1981 as our president, he went after taxes, which was good, but another thing he went after that we have failed to do, whether it was Bush or Obama, we have failed to go after those regulations and make them more business-friendly while still making the restrictions or making sure that the environment or the workplace are safe. There are ways to have regulations to make sure people are safe, that are business or job creation-friendly, and we have to work towards that. Ronald Reagan put together what was called the Grace Commission to look at those regulations and to reform them. Right now, how many small business owners do we have? You know, we got some back there. When I talk to small business owners, what I'm hearing is, is you have no idea what it'll cost next year to hire somebody. How much is Obamacare gonna cost you? How much is the next regulation gonna come out? We have that cap and trade just hanging on our head right now, that was passed by the House. If cap and trade goes through, it's gonna be a lot more expensive to run your business, okay? And we can talk about that actual bill later, but all these regulations out there, before President Obama was in place, we passed about 149 a year that cost the economy $100 million. We're passing 249 a year now. And it just becomes more and more expensive to do business, and you have no idea what the next regulation's gonna be coming out of Washington that's gonna cost you money. We have to stop that. We have to stop the madness. And we have to go back and redo the regulations that are there so that they bring us to where we wanna be in a way that doesn't hurt business and hurt jobs. And let me give you a couple examples, real solutions. American Disabilities Act, who's familiar? You know why we have ramps on our crosswalks and why we have extra-large bathrooms and places of business? I am absolutely for the American Disabilities Act. I think it's a great regulation that allows access, better access, to normal life for our disabled Americans. I think it's great. What I don't like about it is the personal injury lawsuit provision in it, where if you're a disabled American, you go into a restaurant, and if the mirror is two inches higher than it should be, according to the 88, you can personally sue the business and get a settlement from that. And unfortunately, there are some very unscrupulous lawyers and people out there doing that for a living, going in and just having businesses settle. Because as a business owner, you're smart, you gauge your risks, you spend, you try to stretch those dollars to balance your budget. So if the lawyer comes in and says it's gonna be cheaper to settle than it is to fight, you're gonna settle, and people are doing that over and over again. So let's go ahead and have our American Disabilities Act, but take away this personal injury lawsuit ability of people. Let's make it between the government and the business, not between the individual and the business. And now, we still get what we want, and that's better access for our disabled Americans, and we allow these businesses to grow unfettered by these ridiculous lawsuits that are out there. All right, let's take a look at another regulation. I'm talking to an Exxon engineer, you know, the guys out there, as you go to the coast, down Martinez and stuff like that. I met an Exxon engineer. And he pulls me aside at one event, last time I was running, and he says, you gotta help us on these regulations. I go, well, tell me what you mean. He goes, well, the EPA tells me how much heavy metals I can have in my wastewater that goes to open sources. I don't have a problem with that. And you know what? Neither do I. As your congressman, I think that's a smart thing to regulate, how much of that stuff that we allow to go into the system. You know, we don't want lead and mercury and all this stuff in our fish and our water. That makes sense. Says, the problem is, is the EPA tells me exactly how to pull that heavy metal out of my wastewater, and it's inefficient and expensive. Just let me figure it out. Give me the limit and let me meet it, because I can do it a whole lot more cheaply and a whole lot more effectively, but they tell me how to do it instead of just giving me the limit. That's what I mean about reforming regulations. It's good for government to protect our environment or our workplace. It's bad for government to tell businesses how to operate their business to meet those regulations. And if they can't make it, maybe we do have some sort of government program that helps a business. If you can't figure it out and you're gonna go out of business, maybe there is something there that says, hey, we're gonna help you figure this out. But to actually go in and tell them as the default position, that's what's killing jobs. That's what's making it hard for America to grow and their economy. Hi, folks, welcome. Good to see you. So there's a couple of things you can hang your hat on. There's a whole lot more out there. As a small business owner or as a constituent in general, I'm gonna have an open dialogue with folks in my district saying, what kind of regulations are standing in your way, and let's try to figure out how to do it better. Because I'm going to represent you. There's my principles that I won't bend on, and I'm gonna give you those tonight, and you can count on me sticking to my principles. But then there's this area where I'm your voice, and I need to be your voice. And my principle is, is government needs to not tell businesses how to do business. They need to set some limits, do some smart things. Let you all be Americans and figure out how to run your business and prosper. That's my principle. Now, this area is, hey, Rick, we got this regulation that I have to have a clean hairnet every 30 minutes for my restaurant, and it's killing me. Is that a smart way of doing business? I don't know, I pulled that, I just made that up. So, you know, but you come to me, you talk to me about this, and we see what we can do about it. All right, next thing, litigation is that third leg of that three-legged monster that's killing jobs. Litigation, frivolous lawsuits. You know, you see the 2020 where people throw a grape on the ground in Costco or something, and purposely trip on it or something. Those kind of frivolous lawsuits, again, as a business owner, you're, I talked to a restaurant owner in Martinez last time out. A lot of these stories are last time, I have some from this time, we're learning them this time again. But he had an individual that worked for him stealing money out of the register, so he fired him. Well, a few months or a few weeks later, that person comes back with an unlawful termination of the lawsuit. This guy was about to open a second restaurant in Martinez with 30 new employees. He got hit with the 88 thing, cost of money, then he gets hit with this lawsuit, and his lawyer says, you will win dead to rights, but it's gonna cost you $50,000 to $75,000 legal fees to do it. So why don't we offer the guy $25,000 to go away? So being a smart business owner, that's what he did, but now he didn't have the capital to go out and hire those 30 people in a second restaurant. Frivolous lawsuits, this is killing jobs. And we do something to fix that, called loser pays. You want to bring a frivolous lawsuit with a lawyer who's willing to do it for free, and the only way he's gonna get paid is if he gets a settlement? You wanna do that? Well, guess what? You have some skin in the game. You're gonna risk. Well, what about the big guy squeezing out the little guy? Yeah, we gotta put some sort of caveats or protections in there for the little guy that has a legitimate reason to sue the big guy to make sure that they're not squeezed out. But the premise of, you cannot just bring a lawsuit to court and hope the guy settles or get away with it, throw some spaghetti against the wall and hopefully it sticks. That mentality has got to end, and we've gotta put some sort of legislation in place to end it. Car dealership in my hometown of Atchaville had a wonderful community event every year. Carnival, Ferris wheels, games, food, every year was a big deal. They shut down the street, he closed his business for the day, didn't sell a car all day. Every year was a big deal. One year, a gal trips coming off the Ferris wheel, does not hurt herself, tells her husband, I'm fine, just keeps going, and this is the story the owner told me. And, but no. The guy says, no way, this is our ticket, and goes into the owner's office and says, my wife fell off coming off your Ferris wheel, I'm gonna sue if you don't give me one of the cars off the lot. Well, this owner has got some gumption and says, uh, no. So over a year of litigation, later, all kinds of stuff back and forth, he's still, the owner still ends up paying, I think he told me $1,500 or something crazy, when he was willing to settle for, I think, $15,000 to get it over with, but he got it all riled up, you know? The guy kept saying, no, I want this much, and the guy, the sewer, just overstretched his hand, and the owner said, enough, I'm in this bar. But guess what? It was a small check to the guy, but he still had all those legal bills, and he was not even close to being in the wrong. So these are the kind of things that are killing jobs in America, and there's no reason for it. It's not right. And we need representation in Washington that's gonna say, I wanna fix that. That's me, I'm one of those guys. So, growing jobs to grow revenue, and we can do it. It's not telling businesses how to work, it's not hiring government workers, it's getting the burden off of businesses so they can get out there and compete and win and grow and hire people. All right, the other side of balancing the budget is cutting spending. We spend $3.6 trillion a year. Ah, I can't even imagine that money. Remember I said $2 million a minute that we borrow? We're talking $3.6 trillion a year that we spend. Holy cow, that's a lot of money. The government does way too much, borrows way too much, spends way too much. We have to cut back on things that are just not wise. Good to say that, right? Oh yeah, we all agree on that, that's a good idea. How would Congressman Rick Tubbs go after some of these spending cuts? First of all, Medicare. You don't have to raise your hand, but for those of you that are on Medicare, do you know that about 25% of the budget of Medicare goes to fraud and waste? About $100 billion. Estimates from '71, '20, I just throw the $100 billion out there because it's a nice round number. Fraud and waste doesn't deliver one service to you, doesn't pay one doctor, it goes to criminals and just wasting the system. And we can save that money if we went after it. If we invested, oh, Rick Tubbs talking about cutting spending? Invest some money into the fraud department of Medicare, make it a more robust program, and go after that money for real. Get those bad guys. You've got credit card companies that do billions of transactions a year with about 1% fraud. They're doing something right. Now, when you talk to the head of the fraud department in Medicare and you ask her, as I heard an interview of her, why do you let this happen? And she says, I have a billion claims a year, I don't have near the resources to go after that kind of fraud. We do our best. And then later in that interview, I heard a conversation with a criminal that was in jail that racked up $10 million, and this kid didn't sound like he had a high school education to me. But he racked up $10 million in Medicare fees before he was finally caught. Now, think of the folks that are actually sophisticated and smart out there doing this. We've gotta go after that. We can save, we can pay for Medicare easy if we can cut it by 25%, never cutting one service or one payment to a doctor. Now, it becomes a whole lot more affordable. Let's talk about some other programs. There's about $98 billion, and this is according to a Heritage Foundation study, about $98 billion of just bad accounting practices in the government, costing you money. Your tax dollars are being wasted. What does that mean? You go into the grocery store, my wife, where'd you go? She left.
She's heard this message before.
Yeah, she has. She tells me that I thought milk was about $3 a gallon, and she reminded me it's a little more expensive now. So I just use $3 because it's easy. You go, yeah, I don't wanna believe it's higher than that. But anyways, you go into the store, you buy a $3 gallon of milk, you throw a $10 bill on, and as you're walking away, you notice you only have $2 in your hand. Okay, wait a minute, I gave you a 10, and the clerk goes, oh, you're right, here's your 5, and you go out. Right now, we have just bad accounting practices that the government throws a 20 on the table and walks away. And there's your money being wasted, $98 billion. Go after that, and it just takes effort, it just takes people doing their job, going out there, it takes congressmen and women that are willing to put in the effort to make sure there's accountability in those programs and in those different agencies to make sure they're spending your money wisely. As a military commander, I get that scrutiny all the time, and I answer the mail all the time because somebody's asking. And I have to stand up to my boss and explain why I spent certain money one way or another and making sure we get the best value out of that money. It's not ours, we can do it. So there's another way. Okay, that's billions of dollars, let's go to millions of dollars. Who remembers a spotted owl? Okay? I'm not here to discuss or talk about that whole issue. But I will say that in reaction to the loss of lumber industry, to the spotted owl, the government started a program to help the Pacific Northwest lumber industry with some money, Northern California, Oregon, and Washington. Now, you'd think that that program would go away after a few years, after the lumber companies transitioned out, and those millions of dollars spent to help that transition would go to zero. Well, the problem is, that program has not gone away. As a matter of fact, over all these years, it has grown and grown and grown, it's in the tens of millions of dollars. And now, because of smart congresspeople out there that have figured out how to tap into that program for their state, there are 43 states tapping into that program and getting spotted owl lumber money.
Damn, that makes spotted owls.
Yeah, why? Why is that happening? Because there's no accountability, no tracking that. They pass a law, they let the program go, and then the bureaucrats grow it, and more congressmen go in and tap into it, and it just keeps showing bigger and bigger. We've gotta have elected people up there that says, that's nuts, I'm not gonna do that, we're gonna stop that, we're gonna zero that out of our budget, we're gonna save you that money, we're gonna balance our budget by not paying for those programs that we just shouldn't be paying for. All right, one more. Cut, there's lots of them. I'll give you one more. And in my debate with George Miller, George Miller's who I ran against last time, we had a, I had four debates, I give him credit for showing up, for respect the man as coming out there, but I talked about different cuts, and one of the cuts, I had a sheet of different foreign aid projects, anywhere from $10,000 to $800,000. And it wasn't buying influence or, what I see foreign aid's role is as a military guy, is buying influence or preventing having to use the military to achieve certain goals. I agree with that kind of foreign aid, but this foreign aid was going to shore up a mosque in a certain country or retool or rehabilitate some sort of archaeological site in another country. I'm looking at this sheet going, you're kidding me? Why are my tax dollars going for these projects in other countries? That has nothing to do with me as an American. It doesn't buy me any influence, it's some giveaway of my $100. So you look at billions, millions, hundreds of thousands, I'll be down in the thousands. And I'll be looking at stuff to cut to save your money, because that's a lot of money to me. And it's not small potatoes or just little things, like some of our career politicians kinda think, oh, $800,000, that's nothing. Go ahead, put it in the bill. Baloney. I'll be looking at that and go and say, uh-uh, that doesn't belong there. Okay, cutting spending. Some real examples for you, some real hard examples. So when you pull that lever, you know that Rick Tubbs is gonna go after the spotted owl program. You know that Rick Tubbs is gonna go after those agencies spending your money very poorly, increasing the fraud department of Medicare to save our Medicare for our seniors.
Has nothing to do with cutting police and fire?
Yeah, and that's state stuff, and I'll just, what you just said, Rosalind, just nothing to do with cutting police and fire. Here's another insight into my brain and how I think. The federal level, your number one priority is national defense. I mean, we have to spend, there's money to cut in military too, I'm well aware of that, and I have ideas on that. But our priority is national defense, take care of vets, because they're a part of national defense, and then you work down into the judicial system, infrastructure, those kind of things that we need to spend money on. Your tax dollars should be spent on this. When you're bringing up the state issues, which I'm running for federal government, but my perspective is, is the state's top three priorities should be police, fire, and schools. And where do they cut first? Police, fire, and schools. Why? I don't know why, but I would not agree with those priorities in that cutting spending. So when you think about how I'll look at the federal budget prioritizing spending, that wouldn't be on the top of my list. All right, let's go on. Let me kinda put this in a little bit of a fun way, but a serious way at the same time. If you like Obamacare, vote for John Garmend. One of the first things he did, if not the first vote, is when he raised his hand after a special election down in my neck of the woods, winning Congress, is he voted for Obamacare. If you like Obamacare, vote for John Garmend. If you like the increase in your insurance rates in direct response to the cost of Obamacare, then vote for John Garmend. Talked to a gal in Marysville the other day who her quarterly, as a, the only person she was paying for as a small business owner was her health insurance, went from $4,100 to $7,000 per quarter last year. If you like that, vote for John Garmend. If you like the $800,000 jobs that the CBO is projecting we will lose thanks to Obamacare, vote for John Garmend. If you like the 159 new agencies that Obamacare is going to start, vote for John Garmend. If you like that now the original cost of $900 billion has been reestimated by the CBO for $1.76 trillion, a deficit, negative spending of $1.2 trillion over 10 years, if you like that idea, vote for John Garmend. One more, if you wanna see 16,000 new IRS workers as a result of funding and implementing Obamacare to help with the healthcare system, if you like that, then vote for John Garmend. If you don't, vote for me. Repeal and replace Obamacare is my second priority, and it's part of everything in there. It is way too large of government program, too large of a grab, and there are smarter and better ways to reform our healthcare system. Oh, by the way, our healthcare system is the best in the world. That's why leaders of countries come here. One day, I was at Andrews Air Force Base flying my airplane, and I get out and I see the Jordanian, you know, Air Force One, right outside, I was parked right next to it. So I go into base operations, say, hey, what's up? They say, oh, that's King, the King of Jordan here for his cancer treatment. Came to America, huh? Not too long ago, the Prime Minister of Canada was over here for some cancer treatment. It is expensive here, no doubt about it, but it's expensive because it's the best here in the world, and if I need to go to the doctor tomorrow, I'll probably get an appointment. Maybe I'll have to wait till Friday. At a really bad week, I'd get in on Monday. If you go to some of these other places that have socialized medicine, you're waiting months to go see the doctor. If you guys feel it, forget it, just stay home. We have to repeal Obamacare. Now, some of the provisions like pre-existing conditions, making sure people aren't dropped if they get sick while they're on insurance, keeping your children on till the age of 26 if need be, I like those, but they cost money. Don't try to pretend they don't, they cost money. What I'd like to see is some changes like having competition across state lines, like we do with the auto industry. Get competition out there, free market ideas. You know, something that, uh, if you are uninsured, make sure they pay their bill, whether it's twen, ten bucks a month, I don't care. Why is there the assumption that the uninsured just always get dumped on the rest of us who are insured? Why aren't we holding uninsured accountable for their medical bill? Let's do that. But also with that, this is where I think government regulation is good, let's make sure that the hospitals or the doctors are charging everybody the same as a maximum. I talked to one doctor, or head, actually a board member of North Bay, who said, well, sometimes we kinda do charity work. So I don't like that rule, because it takes away the ability to do charity work. I'm like, okay, well, then we'll do a maximum. Everybody has a maximum. So if you're uninsured, you're not paying twenty-three dollars for a Tylenol or six thousand dollars for a broken leg when the insured person only has to pay nine hundred for their insurance. So let's make sure that the bills are payable, okay? There's lots of ways to fix this. Oh, tort reform, huge. Talking to doctors, which I sit down and I have lunch with, uh, doctors, or when I'm in for my cold or my physical, I, I talk to them, I say, hey, how do you like this stuff? And, uh, several doctors have told me fifty percent of what they do in tests and things like that are for lawyers and not for you. They know you don't need it, but just in case they get sued, they gotta order this test to cover their butts. Excuse my language, but I'm a military guy, that's military talk. It's actually CYA, which is even worse, but, I know children are here. So anyways, tort reform has gotta be implemented so that doctors are trying to treat you instead of satisfying lawyers. I mean, don't get me wrong, a doctor shows up drunk and cuts you the wrong leg off, yeah. Okay, that's what now practice lawsuits are for. Not if he's doing his darn best, or her darn best, trying to heal you, and it just doesn't work out. That doesn't give you a lottery ticket winner and go sue. So anyways, so we gotta do some of that. Obamacare, repeal it, if that's what you wanna see, vote for me. If not, vote for the other guy. And then, uh, California's water crisis? We have been sitting on our hands, yeah, I know, ask me that question later. We have been sitting on our hands for a generation, over thirty years, not fixing this problem. There are some really smart, dedicated people, water engineers, I've met a few of them, that are trying to increase our supply through all kinds of different ways, as well as satisfy the environmental concerns that are out there. We have not done one thing to increase the supply of our water for this state for over thirty years. We stopped building dams, we're all, we're, we're starting to tear them down, which is absolutely nuts. We cannot pass on this problem to our children, because thirty years from now, it'll be terrible, too late and terrible. We have to increase our water supply. We have to have drinking water. This, that's, you know, that's a function of government, drink the water. We have to be able to save our delta, we have to have the fresh water supply to push that saltwater out, so the saltwater doesn't come up and make a saltwater marsh. That is a priority and important for a lot of reasons, whether it's the farming, the fishing, the, um, the, just the entire environment itself out there. We, we have to do that, it's a priority. And third, we have to have water for our agriculture industry. It's important to California, it's important to our country, it's important to the world that this state that produces so much food is not inhibited from that, like we did a couple of years ago when we turned the water off to the Central Valley and created a congressionally created dust bowl. My wife sent me a picture from driving up and down ninety-nine, and, look, we're just dead crops and land because we turned the water off. We have to have supply for all three. We can't s, put them in priority order, because guess what? We've already lost the farmers for a couple of seasons and killed them. If you know anything about farming, which I'm guessing most of you do in this room, if not all of you, you can't just go without water for two years and start over with a two-year break. You've killed your trees that took anywhere from seven to fifteen years to get to where they're at. It takes seven years for almonds to be productive, right? Five, well, producing, but profitable, according to my father-in-law, who has an olive ranch. They might get you some paychecks, but they're not paying for themselves.
Big cons for servants.
Big cons, yeah. Um, so if you kill your trees, i, it's not like you can just pick up where you left off. You have to start over maybe a decade from where you're at. So we have to have it all. And we can do that by increasing the supply of our water system through increased storage, more dams, don't tear another one down. Recycling of water. I put water on my lawn during the summer, I don't drink it, why does it have to be potable water that we have run through the system as fresh water that comes through my sink to drink? How about the car wash place down the street? That certainly doesn't need to be potable water, or any other industry that uses water, uh, as part of making stuff. And it doesn't have to be potable, let's do recycling water. There's like forty percent extra supply there if we do it right. It'll take some money, yes, but it's worth it. This is a problem we have to fix. And then, uh, desalination is another issue out there that we can do for some of the larger places like San Diego, LA, and San Francisco. Uh, when you think about it though, now I just said some good ideas, I'm gonna give you another solution in this. First step, first step to increasing the water supply in California, build the Auburn Dam. Build it, finish it, get all that water supply. I know there's concerns out there, this is the twenty-first century, we're smart, we can do it. Let's do it. We, we stopped building it in early eighties, just think if we had all that water right now, would've never had that Central Valley problem if we would've had the Auburn Dam built back then. Okay, enough of all that excitement. Hopefully, I have given you one, I am about fixing problems, I am about solutions, and I'm not afraid to give you some and let you know how I wanna go about to do it. I don't have every answer, but I've got a lot, and I'm willing to go out and fight, and I'm willing to learn for the others. And I'm willing to look to you, my constituents, to help me in that process. All right, next. Shifting gears to the, uh, the actual campaign and election. This is our new district. We're way up there. Ah, right there. I live down here in Vacaville. And we have some of Sacramento, all of Yolo, Yuba Sutter, Calusa, Mostaglen, and some of Lake County. It is mostly a rural, uh, at least square mileage, uh, district. Lot of good folks here, all the way around. Most of the votes are right here, where I live. About a hundred and twenty-six thousand voters there, about eighty thousand in Yolo, and then a smattering of, uh, you know, single digits to ten, eighteen thousand up there. So down here is where most of the folks live in this district, where I'm from. So why is that a big deal? Let me tell you, when we talk about winning this election, which is back to our vision, why I'm doing this, go ahead, Luke. We looked at, sorry, we looked at the, the registration of the district. It leans Democrat, forty-two percent to thirty-three percent, nine points. In my last election, I ran in a district that was fifty-nine Democrat to twenty Republican. I think those are really good numbers, from where I came from, okay? But let's look at the voting history, two thousand and ten, this district actually voted for Carlefean Arena over Barbara Boxer. The Republican won by a point. For, uh, Governor, Meg Whitman did lose by seven, so it does matter the candidate and how they run. California Assembly Republicans in this district, if it was built the way it is now, beat their Democratic opponents by six points, forty-seven to forty-one. And coming down here to Congress, the congressional Republican candidates, which I was one of, lost, but only by a point and a half to their Democratic counterparts. So if nothing changes between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve, the D Congress candidate will beat the R Congress candidate by about three thousand votes. Now, why am I so optimistic that we can overcome that? Because we did this once, and we have some experience in history, and this is what we learned. I call it the five snowflake snowball, that's what we started with. My wife, my three kids, and me, that's how we started our campaign in January of two thousand and nine. Well, that five-flake snowball started rolling downhill and gathered steam and more snowflakes, and was pretty big by the end. We had about eight hundred people, a little over, raise their hand and say, we wanna help you, Rick, in some way, somehow. We had about a thousand donors, give about a hundred dollars apiece, which was a lot of money, uh, and we spent it wisely, I guarantee. And so we had a pretty good, uh, machine going by the end. And what that developed into is the one area that my old district overlaps with my new district, Solano County, Vacaville, where I live. In two thousand and eight, George Miller, my previous opponent, beat that Republican by a vote of fifty-four to forty percent, by about five thousand votes. In two thousand and ten, running this kind of race that I'm doing right now, talking to folks like I'm talking to you, we turned that vote, we beat George Miller, fifty-seven to forty-three percent, right there in Solano County, by four thousand votes. We swapped nine thousand votes in a town of ninety-five thousand people. And we only need to swap three in the rest of the district to beat John Garmend. That's why I'm so hopeful. That's why he's nervous. Sorry, John. Next slide. Okay, um, oh, and I wanna say, just, uh, one more add-on to that, Fairfield, the sister city of Vacaville, they know me just as much as they know me in Vacaville, even though that's where I live. Um, it was funny, my boss, a Colonel in the Air Force, he came in, he just moved in from the Midwest, and, uh, about a month and a half ago now, he, he's getting settled, he's trying to find a place to live, and he's getting out in Fairfield, learning stuff, and I'm in his office, and he goes, I can't go anywhere in this town without somebody knowing you, what's going on? And that's what I told him, well, sir, I'm running for Congress, so, you know, kinda out there in the public. But anyways, he knew. Uh, so Fairfield, we expect at least a similar result that we had in Vacaville, and then we're still going to all these places. I'm here in Glen County, I'm here in Willow's. I spend a lot of time reaching out to Glen County to win votes. That's how serious I am, I'm not discounting any corner of this district, we're going everywhere. I'm focusing on Solano. Out of the ten town halls I'm having, five of them are in Solano County. But five of them are out here, and if I had more time, I'd be everywhere else too. Uh, Lake County, we were up in Lake County, uh, that was my second town hall. We were in Marysville, we're going to Yuba City, and, uh, and, uh, yeah, I think that's it, the rest of, we're out there. Oh, and Woodland, Woodland next week. We're going out there to win votes everywhere, everywhere. I'm not gonna settle just for turning three thousand in Fairfield. I want the district to know who I am, why I'm running, and hopefully will earn their vote as they go to the polls. All right, a little bit about me, and then I'm gonna wrap up. My wife, Kristy, I think you all met, we've been married almost twenty-three years, and in that, and we have, thank you very much. And we have three wonderful children that you saw coming in here, the two girls outside, eighteen and fourteen, and Luke sixteen, here working at the computer plant. Kristy and I got married the same weekend, I was commissioned in the Air Force, so I've been in the Air Force that long, eight, uh, nine years on active duty, and the rest in the reserves at Travis Air Force Base, we got there in nineteen ninety-five, spent some time in Texas before that. We had that small business of property management and development in early two thousand to two thousand and three, when I was activated to go to war for Iraq. So we ended up selling that business a little while later, because the Air Force ended up keeping me for seven years, while we thought it was only gonna be a year. It was voluntary after a certain amount of time, but we did do small business together. What else? Uh, I've served in Iraq and Afghanistan, combat pilot kind of thing, those are some interesting stories that we have to tell you sometime, and let's see. Civil employment, I fly for United Airlines out of San Francisco, I've been there since nineteen ninety-nine, so I'm a pilot. But I have done all those budgets for the Air Force, like we talked about before. I received my BA in math, I'm a numbers guy, I love numbers, they love me, we get along. I don't know if that's true for everybody in here, but we get along. And I got that down at Fresno State, I've done several military schools to learn strategy and strategic thinking and all that, and it's amazing how much of that strategy transfers from the military into civilian life, especially campaigns, but we'll go into that, top secret stuff. And this is gonna be my most enduring feature tonight for you, is I have never held political Uh, well, like I said, I've been around the government, I know a lot of how it works. There will be some learning as a freshman, you know, it doesn't matter, you're gonna have to learn. One thing in the military, you get a new job about every two years, and so you're gonna learn it all over again, so it's not something, uh, I haven't done before. I am ready to be your Congress wing tomorrow, I am ready to go start solving problems tomorrow. Uh, some things to learn, but I'll learn them, no big deal, and we'll get going, and we'll be fixing these problems and making sure we save the American dream for our children and grandchildren right there. Uh, one more click, okay, so wrapping up my portion of it. You seem to got a pretty good candidate, hopefully, hopefully I've convinced you of that at some level. Working hard out there. Lots of volunteers, I'm asking for your, first, your vote, second, if you can, help me out, volunteer, delivering some flyers for the next town hall, making some phone calls, telling your friends and family about me, getting out there. And then a third thing, and I really do put this as, as last in my campaign, although it's still necessary as money. If you have some extra money, and you can throw me a check, whether it's five bucks or twenty-five hundred, that's the max, we always like those checks, but any bit. It does cost money to run this, I have pretty much given up my life savings to do it, which is okay, and I'm happy to do it, but I can't do it without your help, both voting, volunteering, and money. So before you leave tonight, if you like what you heard, throw some money in the kitty so I can help, uh, so it can help us get this message out. And then lastly, but certainly not least, actually the most important, we just ask for your prayers. This is a lot of work, a lot of stress on the family, but we are proud to do it, we are energized to do it, but I know prayers help, and if you wouldn't mind praying for us, we certainly appreciate it, and I know that will help us the most. Anyways, that's it for now, I am wrapped up, and I am opening this up to questions. Please, go ahead. Sir?
Got two or three questions for you, but number one, uh, what's your thoughts on the lobbyists? They're, they're one of the biggest menaces that there is in Washington DC. And if you just cut all their legs off just above the knees, well, that would help out quite a bit. And the sad part of it is, is the whole bunch of them are ex-congressmans and senators, and, uh, they, one of the other things that falls into that same thing is that everything I've heard is that, uh, someone like you going into Washington, you've got a lot of good ideas and plans, but they say, hey, kiddo, you know, you vote for my bill and I'll vote for yours. Otherwise, you get your hind end back there in the corner and just shut your mouth, because we're not gonna vote for anything for you.
Yeah, and, and two points are very good, and I love both questions, and I'll answer them both fully. Lobbyists, let me talk about one idea, that right now, I think it's a year from Congress to lobbyist, and oh, by the way, you could actually work for the dang firm doing not lobbying. Let's make that two, maybe five years, and you can't work for a lobbyist in, uh, in any way, shape, or form, so that you're separated from your congressional influence to your lobbying influence, right? Because that's a big deal. So, that's, you know, a good point. But let me tell you something about lobbyists. I do not see lobbyists as evil. And I'll tell you why. Because whether it's that Exxon lobbyist in my office telling me, I wanna drill offshore, I wanna drill Alaska, and I'll be going, yes, I agree, yes, I agree. But if it's them in there with the fat check, or it's my daughter, that's fourteen years old, telling me, Dad, I wanna park in my neighborhood, she's a lobbyist too. A lobbyist is anybody trying to advocate for their position to get you to do something as their representative. And I have no problem with folks coming in and telling me that, I wanna hear it. And as I look at some of these issues, I want to talk to experts on the issue, but I gotta give both sides, and if that lobbyist's check makes a difference to me versus my daughter's request, I'm the bad guy. Your representative that lets the lobbyist's money dictate their vote, that's the bad guy. And we could do a lot better in this country if we had elected officials that weren't changing or writing legislation in response to money from those lobbyists versus what's best for America. And so if I ever lose that sight, I'm going to quit, and my wife will make me quit, which is good, but I will never forget that. Because, yeah, I expect folks to donate to my campaign because they agree with what I'm doing. If it's ever connected, if their money is ever connected to, I want you to do something against what you think is right, or try to move you in a direction, because if you don't, I won't give you the money, I don't care. And I'll tell you two quick stories on that, uh, to let you know I'm serious. In business, when we had our property management development, I had already forked over eighteen thousand bucks for some plans, I had already, uh, hand shook a deal with a guy for his property, and we were moving forward, and we're gonna build a fourplex, Section Eight, you know, all the good stuff. Had a lot of time and money invested, and all of a sudden, a fella comes back to me and says, ah, you know what, I want more money. So, what do we got? You know, right when you, instead of going in and signing escrow, he called me and said, I want more money. Said, ah, what do you mean, we got a deal, this is, uh, this isn't right. Well, I just want another fifteen thousand dollars, you know, that's not what we agreed to. And so we had this argument back and forth, and the longer we talked, the more this felt wrong to me. And so I said, well, let me think about this, I don't think it's right. And so I went back, prayed, thought, talked it over with my wife. And in the end, looking at myself in the mirror that morning, as I was about to call him shaving, I said, "How do I look at myself in the mirror if I do this? If I say yes to this guy, because I would have still made a couple hundred thousand bucks, so what's fifteen thousand dollars? You know, I would have still made a lot of money on this deal. But I said to myself, "If I say yes to this guy, when will I say no? If I don't draw the line at the beginning, where is that line?" And I said, "No." I called the guy back, said, "Ain't doing it. Either sign the papers, or the deal's off." He, the deal's off. And I lost all that money, and I don't feel bad about it at all. And guess what? A few months later, I was activated, went to work, went to be able to do the project anyway, so, you know, it worked out in the long run. But I didn't know it at the time, and that's how I feel. Another thing, this campaign, this one right now, it's serious. We could actually win. We know that. And other people know that, too. And I was approached by a big donor, not him, but his surrogate, and offered me some good money to make sure if I were to put a couple of his people on my staff. So really, not even close. And so those thousands of dollars for my campaign did not end up in my counters. And I have my control over my staff. So lobbyists, I don't think they're the bad guys. I think your representative that allows lobbyists' money to influence them is the bad guy. Now, the peer shift that you talked about, excuse me. I read a nice book by, what is it, H.L. Richardson, called Confrontational Politics, one of your state senators a while back. And he talks about peer shift. When you're the new guy out there, right now, we're talking, you're holding me accountable, you're asking me questions, I'm telling you what I think are good ideas. We're peers in here, and we're sharing ideas. Well, I go to Washington, and now who am I hanging out with? Those guys out there, the ones that say, "Hey, sonny." And I lose contact with you, and so I, my peers shift, and my ideas shift with them to conform to them. No way. First of all, my eyes are wide open and know what's going on. Second of all, I am receiving no establishment support in my campaign. They like me, I've talked to them, they, "Oh, yeah, you're a great candidate," and all that stuff. "How much money are you raising?" I don't care how much money I raise. How many votes am I getting? That's what's most important. So I'm getting no establishment support, so I owe them nothing. And when we win this primary in June, and all of a sudden their candidate loses, and now they're coming, "Hey, you won, we want to get behind you." Yeah, you got, you're getting behind me, but you're doing it on my terms, because you weren't there for me in the beginning. Not that that would have mattered, but you see the dynamic being set up. Next thing is, if California has only kicked out two incumbents in Congress over the past twenty-five years or so. Gary Condit, if you remember that fellow, Enver Sed, you know, apparently, he didn't kill that gal, but he was cheating on his wife with her, so it was good he got kicked out anyways. So, and then the other one was Richard Pombo. Imagine for a moment, because I imagine this every once in a while, just to chime in. Imagine for a moment, California, the left coast replaces a liberal Democrat, John Garmendy, with a conservative Republican, Rick Tubbs. That, and it's very possible, like I showed you, very possible. That is an amazing story that gives me some credibility going to Washington to not have to toe the line and to be able to be the kind of leader I want to be. I'm going to Washington to be a leader and not to be a follower. That's just in me, that's in my blood, that's why I've succeeded in my Air Force career. And then the last thing I'll offer you on that is, as a squadron commander, I'm like the lower level of upper management in the military, which means all the other guys outrank me. So when we sit around at the table and discuss things, they all outrank me. So eventually, it's their decision. But I'm at the table. I get to say something. I get to offer my opinion, my way of doing things. And I don't win all of the fights. As a matter of fact, as the bottom guy, I lose most of the money, but I win some. And I've learned over these last couple of years as a squadron commander, how to make those small victories and to build on them and to have them grow. I have a vision for my Air Force Reserve Command. And God forbid this election doesn't work out, which I am thinking it will, "Oh, I'm going to go work from the bottom up, change in the Air Force Reserve." Now, I can do a whole lot better as a congressman to help my Air Force Reserve. But anyways, my point is, is I've been in this position, and I've been successful, and I will do it as your freshman congressman. And assuming that I win this election on how I'm running, I am running on these ideas, on these issues, on these solutions. And I go and do what I say, I expect you to keep voting in, so I get the time to build the seniority and to build the time needed to work on these things to accomplish our goals. So it's a very good point you bring up, and my eyes are wide open. I know I'll be a freshman, but we have some things going for us because of what we're doing. I have some things going for me because of who I am, and we'll have time to work on these things. And then, and when you talk about balancing the budget, I want to see it balanced in five years. I don't think it's a long-term issue, like our Congressman Garmendy has said in my presence at a debate. It's not a long-term issue. Balance it in five years, and I'm going to work towards that. You're going to hear about the Rick Tubbs budget that balances us in five years and pays down the debt to zero in thirty years like a mortgage, so our kids don't have to. So it's good points. What else you got out there? A moment? Yes?
Well, you know, all, all the jobs in the deregulation, Rick, are wonderful. And I'm, I'm glad you're pursuing that, but as Americans, or, or myself as an American, I'm very concerned about our civil rights and pub, you know, and abilities to protest being stripped away. I'm, I'm very concerned about the people being stripped, searched for car tickets. There's a general dehumanization going on from the government down. And I mean, I, I know that's, it's a really loaded question for you, but it's something like, you know, as an American, I'm very concerned that the Bill of Rights has essentially been nullified since the end of last year.
So when you talk civil rights, you're not talking about Martha Luther King, nineteen-sixty civil rights?
No.
You're talking seventeen-eighty-nine Bill of Rights?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, did I, oh.
It's okay.
I transposed.
I'm just making sure I understand the question.
Well, you, it came out, yeah, that's exactly, it said the wrong one.
Yeah, and, and you bring up a great point. Our Bill of Rights has been under attack, in, in my opinion, for some time, whether it's come from the Supreme Court's judicial activism. You see our President now out there calling for judicial restraint when it's his Obamacare bill. Really? Well, first of all, what is the Supreme Court's job? And that is to determine whether a law is constitutional or not. The Supreme Court is doing their job. What the problem is, is when they come up with new rights out of legislation and pass it, that's judicial activism and lack of restraint. So anyways, what you're saying is, I understand. Second Amendment is a good example with all these gun control offices, and they're really reactions. I mean, we just had in Oakland, two days ago, my first sergeant is an Oakland police officer, and she's in my office, and we're chatting about the Air Force, and she gets a text about the Oakland shooting that happened. You know, tragic. And the problem is, is we look at that, we go, "Oh, if that person didn't have a gun, that wouldn't have happened." "Oh," and they, we look at it through emotion or through irrational logic. No, I say, in that case, now, let's talk about logic. If there were some folks, some good folks that had a gun, and somebody goes off, a bad guy goes off with a gun, how many shots does that bad guy get off before a good guy stops the shooting with his gun? Right? You talk Second Amendment, think of it in those terms, because gun control laws just make the good guys more powerless, less able to defend themselves, right? The bad guys, they're carrying guns, they don't care. Gun control does not affect bad guys. So you're right, and we have Constitution. When I talk about my solutions, I say they're common sense, which means they work today and tomorrow. Conservative. What does conservative mean to me? Smaller government, not bigger government. We don't look to the government as it's first, "We have solved something." We look to the American citizen. I want to see government smaller and not bigger. And then third is constitutional. I think the Constitution did an excellent job of giving us the right kind of government to produce American-style freedom that has resulted in the incredible amount of opportunity and prosperity, turning this country into the best country the world has ever seen. Now, my son has just put up my freedom curve. This is my idea here, and I'm pretty proud of it, I must say, and I hope it's in the textbook to every kid in high school within ten years. Because for me, what you're talking about, Bill of Rights, and what is great about America and how they're under attack, this freedom curve is something I put together to try to put my idea of governing and the Constitution into a simple picture. Pictures of thousands of ways. Over here is your freedom. Down here is no freedom. Size of government on the bottom, no government, no freedom. It's anarchy, it's chaos, it's tyranny of the strong. You need some government to protect your rights, to order society, so as some government grows, your freedoms grow. So you get to the top there. And that's the minimum amount of government for the most, maximum amount of freedom. That's where the Constitution puts us up there. That's American government, that's American freedom, what has made this country great. Unfortunately, as you continue to grow government, your freedoms start to fade. And if you go down here with max government, min freedom, again, you're talking about communist Venezuela, Cuba. You work your way up, some of the South American countries. Go up here a little further, and you're in Europe, where it's socialized democracy. And then again, unfortunately, I think America is somewhere on the wrong side of the curve, going in the wrong direction. So if I see, and, and I'm going to give you very few promises, because if I give you one, I'm going to stick to it. This is one promise you take to the bank. I will never vote or write, vote for a bill or write a bill that I think takes us down the wrong side of this curve. Anything I write or vote for is going to keep us on top, take us to the top, where we belong, because that's what's made America great. You want to live in Europe? You want a socialized democracy? Move there. You want to live in a communist country where government's in control and everything? Then move there. As an American citizen, you have their right, go. Believe my country alone, I like it. So, not a specific, perhaps, answer, but certainly a philosophical answer to your question on the way I look at it.
That's a good answer.
What else? Yeah. Yes, Ben?
Yes. Would you vote for the Republican budget that was introduced by Paul Ryan the other week?
Yeah, and that's why I say I don't give promises. I have not read it. I have heard a few things about it that sound good to me. I have heard a few things about it from the other side, Democrats, that, I read John Garmendy's article in SacB, that, you know, from their perspective, sounds like we need to take a look. So I would want to read it first before I gave you a yes or a no. I will say this, though. I think Paul Ryan has been doing some excellent work, trying to solve some of the problems that we're facing in our budget. I would consider him an ally, somebody I would go to when I was a congressman, to work together on it. I would want to reach across the aisle and work with all congressmen. Some will just not come on board. But the majority, I'm talking in the three hundreds, should be four hundred and thirty-five should, will agree that we need to balance our budget and how to get there and, and work there. I mean, I have what I said to you today, but I'm willing to work with all sides to get there. What I like about Paul Ryan's budget is it's cutting spending, it reduces the complexity of the tax code. We have twenty thousand-plus pages of tax code. No way any of us can comply. No way. It's out of control, it's crazy. We have to simplify the tax code. A good example, just to tell you how I view my party, which, I'm an American first, I am not a Republican first. I think my party was wrong over the summer when we were making this debate about the debt ceiling, and they were saying, "No, new revenue." And, "But we want all these cuts." And so the PR geniuses over in the Democrat Party put that commercial together of Granny in the wheelchair and the Republicans throwing her off the cliff, right? And now the Republicans are a bunch of grumpy old men just trying to do bad things. Well, they lost the high ground. We're trying to balance the budget, trying to grow jobs. And as a conservative, a guy who believes in smaller government, I would have gave up that, what did the Democrats offer? Well, give us the corporate tax, or the corporate jet tax loophole, right? Something that everybody sees as something for the rich, right? "Oh, that's taking care of rich people, blah, blah, blah." I would have said, "Absolutely, here you go." Because my conservative principles is a simpler tax code, and all these loopholes and, and special deals that lobbyists got put into the bills, we need to pull them out. Yeah, because my conservative principle is to make government simpler, to tax code simpler. "Here you go, take that. Now give me some more cuts." So that's a, a place I would have disagreed with my party, and why, when I look at Paul Ryan, I'm not going to just blindly follow, I want to take a look at it, see what we can do, and then go from there. There are some very good things in that budget that I like. We have to reform entitlements. We cannot allow Social Security and Medicare to continue on their current path. We have to take a look at them and change it, because if we don't, the extreme position is status quo. Because the status quo is unsustainable, those things go bankrupt, and we either lose benefits, you know, raise taxes, print money, all the solutions to letting things go the way they are are just not good. And so we have to do something. And I applaud Paul Ryan for having the guts, the leadership, to say, "This is my idea, and let's go forward." And now, like I said, you'll hear about a Rick Tubbs budget. I'm actually rooting for Paul Ryan to be Romney's VP, so I can, you know, do the Rick Tubbs budget, not competing with Paul Ryan's. And, but I'll be willing to make some sausage, if you will, and that doesn't mean compromising principles. That means recognizing there's other ways and good ways that I don't have every answer to get to the goal. And I'm willing to work with my fellow congressmen and women to get there. I like what Paul Ryan's trying to do, to say that I agree with his budget on, I'd have to read it some more, but the direction he's going, I like. Behind? Oh, okay, you first, sir.
Hey, look, your, your opinion about just the housing market, what we can do to solve the problem, and also about this three-point-eight percent tax that's going to, that's supposed to be coming on, on every sale?
Yeah, well, repeal Obamacare, you don't have to worry about the three-point-eight percent tax, I think, one. Second, just to clear up, and I've done some research on this, and my best research has shown me that if, if you make above a certain amount, and I think it's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, so, but in California, you could make that on your home very easily, that's when you have to pay it. It's not, I've seen some emails out there that say, "If you sell your home for a hundred thousand dollars, you got to pay thirty-eight hundred bucks." The tax, I believe, is on a higher-income person. So those of us with normal homes would not necessarily have to pay that tax. But, no, that was one, it's a healthcare bill. You're doing real estate taxes to pay for healthcare? They just throw in stuff to try to bring the numbers to equal. Oh, and guess what? They're not even close to equal, right? It was a bad bill all the way around, terrible. I'll throw my, my, my party under the bus one more time. No child left behind. One of those bills that seemed to have the best of intentions, right? Making sure all the kids are, are learning as they go, but in a practical sense, it has just turned out to be a debacle. They're teaching the test instead of teaching kids the, the subjects.
Right.
Whatever the intentions were behind that bill, the way it has worked itself out has just not helped our education system. So I'd like to get out of K through twelve education. You see how I turn things in so I can give you more information on that? I want to see the federal government get out of K through twelve, let's repeal, no child left behind. And you can throw Obamacare in that exact same category. Maybe the best of intentions behind that bill, but it is not going to work.[1670.36] It is not, three-point-eight percent is a great example. Now, the housing market, if you ask the bottom, oh my goodness. We bought our home in two thousand, right? It was a sweet spot, you know? Sometimes I get it right. I've bought companies like Taser just before they went crashing down, and the children really like to tease me about some of my stock market purchases that haven't worked out so good. But when we bought our home, boy, right there in two thousand, we got a decent price and a decent interest rate. And as I'm sitting there with two jobs, making a decent amount of money, able to afford the house that I'm trying to purchase, the guy across the desk from me trying to sell me my loan, he's like, hey, you wanna do a no-document loan? What's that? Well, you don't have to show me anything, you just sign this piece of paper. Is it gonna cost me more money? Yeah, but it's, you don't know that. No, I want a thirty-year fix, that's the cheapest. Well, hey, we can, we can, uh, qualify you for more money. You can buy a bigger house. This house is good enough for me. Uh, I like it, I can afford it, and if I get more, I can't afford it. Well, we'll put you into an adjustable rate, and we'll lower your payments. What happens in five years? Oh, it'll go up if interest rates go up, but you just refinance or you sell, whatever. He kept throwing me all these different ideas, and I just kept coming back to thirty-year fix. Leave me alone, I wanna own this house the rest of my life. So, as I'm sitting there, as, as I go away with Christie, as we're driving away, and I said, that was crazy. Who would do such a thing? And then, I start going, people are doing this. There's gonna be a housing crunch in about five years when all these adjustables go. Well, it took a couple more years, but it started. I knew it was coming, and I was trying to figure out how to make money out of it. And I knew it was gonna take a lot of capital to buy all those distressed homes, and I just never got there on my United and, uh, Air Force salary. But anyways, I saw something bad coming, because just what was going on? Unfortunately, many people done some things they shouldn't do. And the way our market works is if you buy a house that you can no longer afford, whether it's, you know, you lose your job or whatever happens, you give it back to the bank and start over. And in some cases, that is the right answer. Now, as I was knocking on doors, somebody asked me the question, or he was, I could see the desperation in his face. He had a job, he got a pay cut. In the meantime, his house, that was worth whatever it was, had gone down in value. He had a job, he could make payments. He was trying to work with the bank to readjust his mortgage to something he could afford and not lose his house. Okay, I get that, but then he said something critical to me that really made me stand up and listen. He goes, how many billions of my tax dollars went to pay, uh, bail out those banks? Because they made stupid decisions, and now nothing's coming my way when I'm trying to do the right thing. You've got a point. How much of that money was our money that went to bail them out, and they're not helping us out? You bet. We need to do some sort of, ah, here's another good example, personal. I have tried to refinance my home several times, and because my value has gone down to where I'm no longer eighty-twenty, you know, eighty percent loan to twenty percent equity, I'm in that twenty percent rate. I gotta pay PMI now if I refinance, so it doesn't make sense.
Don't forget the bonuses.
Yeah, so.
CEOs.
We can look at it, because we spent tax dollars, we can look at it and say, no, Mr. Bank, that we gave you billions of dollars to, you are gonna work with your customers where it makes sense to make sure that they can stay in their homes, and we have to define it. And you hear these programs that were supposed to be great programs and have helped only a few thousand people. You gotta shake your head and go, why? Because a well-intentioned bill got out of Congress, got passed off to the bureaucrats, down to the banks, who they're out for making money, right? They don't have a good-heartedness, and, oh, let me help you out. I never had one loan agent say to me, you know what, Rick, you're a good guy, you did things right, and, uh, hey, we're not gonna make quite as much money off of you, but you're right. We're gonna refinance you for a point less, and we're just gonna take the hit. Never heard that. That's where some of this government regulation can come in when there's tax dollars attached to it. I don't wanna tell banks how to run their business, but if I'm giving you billions of dollars of tax money, I have the right to start regulating some of that money, and we can help some of these folks. Some are just gonna have to start over. Some that have a reasonable chance of being able to afford their house under a modified loan program, we need to help them. Oh, and by the way, for those of you like me that have played by the rules and done things right, you can get swept into that too, uh, and be able to finance or refinance at some of the good deals out there. So that, that would be my answer. It's typical.
You could think Barney Frank and Donald Trump.
I blame both parties again. Glass Seagull was repealed in nineteen ninety-nine with a Republican Congress and a Democrat president. That was one of the biggest mistakes we've ever made in reducing regulation. It was an excellent regulation that went into place after the crash in nineteen twenty-nine and the Depression to make sure that banks couldn't take on too much risk with your deposits. They had to have very strict, uh, conservative investment vehicles. We repealed that in nineteen ninety-nine, and, uh, that was part of the reason why we had the problems. We had, back to Carter, through Reagan, through Bush, through Clinton, ramped up with Clinton. We had this idea of trying to have affordable housing, loosening up the credit, uh, to people who really couldn't afford, uh, the homes that they were doing, these no, or these no-document loans, all this stuff. Less than, you know, zero down payment, these, these crazy loans.
Interest-only?
Yeah, interest-only loans, you know, and then, uh, and then under Bush, seventeen times he went to Congress saying, you have got to straighten this out and fix it. And seventeen times, with a Republican Congress, they turned him down. Democrat Congress too, later on in two thousand and six. So there were people who knew there was problems, but no leadership, and it was both sides of the aisle. They screwed up. We have to learn from our mistakes and have the willingness to admit that we screwed up and then fix it from there. Sir?
Question about, it's the honesty and integrity of the way, uh, bills are made and where they put pages and pages of additional writers that have no bearing on that particular bill. How do you get rid of this?
You know, the Senate has, uh, it's called a germane clause, or words to that effect, where a bill has to have, everything in it has to be germane or, or applied.